Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Today is Wednesday, January 3, 2018. And before we begin our council meeting, I would ask that you join in standing and sing the Pledge of Allegiance with me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So, Jeff? Thank you. All right. And now, to begin our council meeting, may I please have a roll call?
Pete Hamel.
Here.
Sean Broosser.
Here.
Brad Hent.
Here.
Greg Gils.
Here.
Tom Eggers.
Here.
Thank you. Before we begin in the agenda, I would like to note out that number six in the new business, we will not be taking any action on that item today. So when we get into new business, we will just skip over five and go directly to number seven. Right? Skip five, go to seven. Skipping six, thank you. Making sure of the right agenda, too. Okay. And now, with that said, the first item on our agenda is public comments. Do we have any public comments at this time? We do not, so we will move forward to the consent agenda. I'd like to point out, Ange has placed minutes before you. These minutes are corrected due to a pay estimate number 14. A few items were not noted, such as the motion and second that was added. So when you approve the consent agenda, it'll be taking into consideration the amended minutes before you.
What were the corrections, again?
I didn't have who made the motion in the second. This one does. The one in the packets didn't have who made the motion.
Right. So the one before you has the corrected minutes regarding pay estimate, and that was the final payment.
Number 14.
Number 14. Okay.
Oh, all right.
So it just shows who made the motion, who seconded, eyes, gaze. Okay? SCAD application is Sarah Ryder Chili? I don't know. We don't know? See me afterwards for spelling? No? Just Sarah Ryder? Thank you. So no Chili? Scratch Chili. Sarah, S-A-R-A-H, Ryder, R-E-I-T-E-R. And then last, the resolution designating official newspapers, that would be the Northwest Iowa Review and the Sheldon Mail-Sun.
The Sioux City Journal.
So, thank you, sorry, Sioux City Journal. Yep. Thank you. And Sioux City Journal. Any questions regarding the consent agenda? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. Last request for questions, comments? May I have a roll call, please?
Gils.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Broosser.
Aye.
It's gonna be a challenge.
Yeah. Wonderful. Going into new business, at this time, we now open our public hearing. And this is regarding the amended budget for fiscal year 2017 and 2018. The public hearing is now open. Are there any comments regarding the amended budget for 2017, 2018? Were there any comments received in writing? None. Thank you. So if there are no public comments now, last chance, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
And this is just to close the hearing. We can have a little discussion afterwards. So, is there a second to close the public hearing?
Second.
Thank you. And a roll call to close the public hearing.
Broosser.
Aye.
Gils.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next, we would need to consider approving the amended budget for fiscal year 2017-18. I hope you've all had a chance to read through that. It's fairly explainable. If any of you have questions, Ange would be so excited to answer your questions. Does anybody have questions on the amended budget? Amended budget? And if not, then do we have a moment?
I do, actually.
Oh, okay.
It noted down at the bottom that library changes. What specifically was that, again?
Library just changed some of their operating line items to, they like to have a balanced budget, and when the council didn't give them what they asked for in property taxes last year, they made some changes and are gonna use some of their reserves.
So it's nothing to do with the requests we're dealing with later in the agenda?
No, nothing to do with that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Explanations needed? Not then, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you.
Support.
Thank you. Last request for comment? There's none, so may I have a roll call, please?
Eggers.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Broosser.
Aye.
Gils.
Aye.
Okay. Hello. And now, number four on the agenda. We will open the public hearing, and this is to amend the zoning ordinance. If you remember, we made a clarification to specify this as single-family. So it's clarifying the minimum floor space of single-family. We have, we'll open the public hearing, close it, and then we have two action items to take place. So right now, the public hearing is open to amend the zoning ordinance. Again, it is to change the language to explain the single housing and the minimum floor space, yes, Pete?
How many types of housing do we have? Single?
In multi-family.
Single, yep.
So, does a mobile home, how does that fall?
Mobile home would fall under the...
To be single-family?
Actually, I think if you look at our zoning regulations, mobile homes have their own separate chapter and definitions.
Okay. Because some of them are gonna be under 800 square feet.
Yeah. They have their, they have their own category.
Okay.
This, we ran into issues here because the intent was for the square footage requirement, per the author, to apply to single-family dwellings. And then it became a question of, without that in there, did it apply to things like condos, townhomes, multi-apartment complexes, et cetera?
Okay.
Even duplexes.
All right.
And there are going to be some items, when the zoning ordinance was last amended, in 2010, there are homes and in other things that are now not complying.
So are they grandfathered in, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Good point, good question. Thank you, Pete. Are there any other public comments right now regarding the amended zoning ordinance?
Move to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there a second to close the public hearing?
Second.
Thank you. And may I have a roll call, please?
Hent.
Aye.
Gils.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Broosser.
Aye.
Thank you. Then, under number four, there's two action items that we need to take. The first is by resolution, you know, approval by resolution of the amendment of the zoning ordinance. And again, it's revised to add the clause "single-family dwelling" as follows, with the 800 square feet of floor space. This is by resolution, and the next step we take is the first reading to approve by ordinance. So right now, is there a motion to approve by resolution, approving the amendment to the zoning ordinance?
I will move that.
Thank you.
Support.
Thank you. Questions, comments? A roll call, please?
Hamel.
Aye.
Gils.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Broosser.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Broosser.
Aye.
Wonderful, thank you. And now, number five in new business. We have some of our board members, as well as Nicole, our library director here, to make a request on behalf of the library board. Jessica, you're going to join us. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi. Hello. I'm here on behalf of the library, obviously, and just, some of you were here in October when Nicole, who is our director, if you don't know Nicole, she's right there, she's our library director, and she presented our renovation project plans to the city council. So, and at that same time, we asked for $50,000 from the city to help fund the project. And since that time, we have been working on getting some funding, and part of that is that we do have a $50,000 commitment from the Sheldon Library Foundation. And at the October presentation, we did ask for $50,000 from the city to match that contribution. So that was where the initial money was being asked for. Since that time, we have learned that we do have to get an architect involved, so that is going to increase our project by $20,000. It's a state-mandated architect to just oversee the project. So with that in mind, our project total is now $220,000. And we really think that this is an important project for the city, and we have been working on securing funds, we being the board, as well as the director. But one thing that we're finding, as potential donors are looking at giving money to the library, is they're asking, what is the city doing to support the project? And we don't have an answer.
Okay.
Because we haven't been given one.
Sure.
And we think that that is potentially causing some people to hold back and not give to the library and to our project. And because we do think it is important, we are now asking, we have a couple of requests that I'm gonna bring forward to you. The first is, is that we're requesting to be able to spend some of our savings, actually pretty much all of it. We're asking for approval to spend $70,000 of our savings. Now, this is the library's money. So for those of you who maybe aren't aware, the library underspent its regular budget for about the past three to five years, and we have approximately $80,000 left, and we wanna put $70,000 of that towards this project. If you do approve that request, then the middle part of the document that I provided to you gives an outline or a summary of where we'll be for fundraising. And it gets us up to about $128,000 out of that $220 that we need. So that gives $72,000 that's left that we need to raise funds for. And honestly, we, the board thinks this is a great opportunity for the city to provide kids and families with a safe place to grow and learn. And Sheldon, all of you and Sheldon as a whole have been working really hard over the last three to five years to make Sheldon a great place and make some really significant improvements. For example, we have the cityscape in the revitalization of the downtown, and streetscape, I think is officially what it's called. And then we have the new Ball Diamonds out at the city that were a partnership between the school and the city. And then we have the new event center, of course. So all these things are great parts of the city. Shouldn't the library be involved, too, and be included? So what we're doing as a board is we're coming back to you one more time and giving you an opportunity to provide contributions financially to this project. And we think it's a great city service that deserves attention and should be contributed to outside of the library's savings. So that's what we're asking for. We would also ask that you let us know, one way or another, whether we can expect this money or some kind of contribution or not. We think it's only fair to the library board, as well as anyone who's looking to donate to the library, because they wanna know where the city stands. And we really, we appreciate the partnership that we've been building over the last years. We think that the library has really grown in being able to build our communications and how we're working with the city, and we wanna continue down that path. We think this is a great project to do that with, and also think that when the library is better and we make it a great place to be, that it can be part of Sheldon and part help to build that tagline of where families come first. Does anyone have any questions?
I don't have questions, but I have comments. And we talked a little bit about this. And one thing I would love to point out is that when budget time comes up, we definitely will talk about this. So that's one answer we can give. Because when you come in the middle of a budget season, and we've talked about that, it's hard to just say, yeah, here you go. It's something that we need to look into and see if there's anything within this fiscal year to give. So in the future, we can look at the budget season, which is coming up within the next few weeks.
Exactly.
So for fiscal year 1819. Also, as we were talking, I appreciate the fundraising efforts that the library's doing, but I had a few ideas that I shared, and I'd like to share with everybody, is we can send, you know, request for donations, but what I would like to propose also is including in our city bills, the fundraising brochure or sheet page that you had. We could tweak that.
Right.
To make that a one-pager and put it in with our city billing. That can help bring awareness to it also, whether people can help to donate a dollar or $100 or whatever, but also bring awareness to the project. That's one way we might be able to help out, and that's a fairly simple, high-tech process that we can do downstairs. I even offered to help fold and stuff, but I guess we're so high-tech that the machines do that, so. And then also, maybe use that same kind of advertising at the same time in the paper. I saw, you know, stories about the fund, the fundraising efforts and the idea of the project, but, and your goal and how far it's at with the library, but then it didn't have anything about how or where to, you know? Obviously, you're gonna send your donations to the library, but it'd be great to have the visual, make it a little more personal. So if we can send that out with our next water bill, I think that can help bring awareness as we're seeing where we might be able to pinch any pennies within this fiscal year as we also plan for next fiscal year. So, in that effort, we wanna help out through fundraising. We will look at it in the next budget year, but I really don't know about this budget year.
Right. And I appreciate that, and I think that's a really good suggestion. I don't think that answers the question, though, that people are asking us.
Sure, sure.
You know, and we can go back, and part of that was asking, you know, asking community members and businesses, and we've applied for some grants, and we've actually earned a few grants, but it still doesn't answer the question that the donors are asking, which is, does the city support it or not?
Sure.
From a financial perspective.
Absolutely.
You know, obviously, the verbal is, yeah, we support it. We would love to have it approved.
And as you said, I'm sure that if we could, we would. You just say, here you go, but I think we have to check out the budget.
You know, it's a good project.
Yep.
But it's in the middle of the budget cycle. All the other projects we've done, we've been ahead of the budget. We've planned those out for years so we can work it into the budget. Just coming and asking us to throw out X amount of dollars is a little tough during the budget cycle when we're in the middle of the year. We don't know if we're up or down. We need to have this information, should've had it a year ago, so we could've budgeted in this budget year. So, yeah, I think we're committed to the project, but we can't say what dollar amount we're gonna throw at you today in this budget or in the upcoming budget, because we don't know yet. We haven't started on that.
And we are asking, to be fair, for a very small amount compared to the whole city budget or for projects like the event center, which is billions of dollars. This is a drop in the bucket.
But we don't know if we have $5,000 or if we have $50,000 yet. We don't know. That's where, that's how I feel about it right now, in the middle of the cycle. It's something we need to talk about when we do our budget workshops.
And unfortunately, in our current budget, I don't know of an item where we have something set aside for an emergency or whatever. Sometimes we have to scramble, but we will start that process very shortly and then certainly take a good, hard look at it.
Just from a budgeting, I got a question. So what expenses are you planning to incur in the current fiscal year that you're needing the money in this year?
We'd like to start with, we'd like to start in the next month or so with the project. So it would be the construction-type projects, the putting in the windows for the new Storytime room. There's a few plumbing items, you know, and that might be, too, where if we don't have all the money, if we get approval to spend the $70,000, we have 128. Maybe that's all we do.
Well, and...
Or we do, you know, smaller amounts and then...
And break it into phases or...
And break it into phases.
That's what I thought, too. Does it have to be a full-blown project?
It'd be easier.
So you have to have the $20,000? I mean, can't you just, I don't, I don't know. But could you do a portion where it's the remodeling of the walls, and then later on it's the carpet or it's the, you know, et cetera?
Right.
So that way, when you don't have the whole umbrella, then do you have to have the engineer?
You do, yeah. You cannot, you cannot try to bypass the state statute by intentionally having phases.
By having an engineer.
If it's...
But if we intend, if we seriously don't have the money and we have to do it because of financial reasons, is that different?
I don't know that it's wise to partake on something if you don't have the funds.
But if we, that might be where we can do the phases.
Like, let's say you have $70,000, you can do the walls or whichever.
Right.
And then when you raise more, you do a next dream.
Whatever. I think we have to have further discussion on that. I think some of that stuff was maintenance that could happen anytime.
Right. Like carpet replacement. It hasn't been replaced for 20 years. It's a maintenance issue, even though it hasn't really been maintained very well.
And I guess I don't quite understand all of that, like how that all pieces together and then the legalities of it, too, being a city building. So at this point, counsel, are we ready, you know, to allow the library permission to use 70 of their savings and as amending their budget?
I guess I'm confused about that. I mean, if it's, if it's there and it's in their budget, I don't know that they have to come to us every time they spend a nickel out of it. I don't understand that concept.
But it's not in our budget. It would have to be amended, is why we have to. In the past, we've just worked with Angie on it, but...
They haven't planned, you know, a plan to spend $70,000. Even though they have the money in their savings, they didn't put it in their budget to spend. So we, it would be a part of another amendment.
Part of another amended budget.
Okay.
Yeah. And in the past, like for this one, Tom, I believe you had asked about why is, or someone had asked, why is the city, or why is the library in that amended budget that you just approved?
Mm-hmm.
We just worked with Angie on that. Sean had asked, requested that we come and ask for formal approval on being able to spend that.
And we will likely be amending the overall city budget once additional funding comes in for the wastewater treatment plant, so that, that could come, the library's budget could, could fall under that budget amendment.
And that's not uncommon, right, for us to amend the budget?
Correct.
So, so it's more about, we're gonna use our money when we need to amend our budget. Can we do that, please, counsel? Our, counsel, I would like to make this official by, you know, a motion, a second, if that is something we wanna entertain. And then from there, come back, maybe the first part of February, because by then, let's see, in two weeks, we have our next council meeting. After that, we hope to have our budget workshops. We should have a better understanding where we're at now, what next year's looking at and what, and I don't, and I'm not saying we can.
Right.
It's just an opportunity to, we're all gonna be in the same room looking at the budget.
May I have a question?
Yes.
Jessica, when we're looking at the budgeting, and I agree with everything that's being said here about the budgeting cycle and what we need to follow there, question I have for you and your board is, is what are you looking for, for more donations? Right now, you show that you're at, what, $2,600 in personal donations? Yet, you're also saying that you feel that that could be greater than $2,600 if they knew what the city was going to do. I'm gonna reverse that a little bit. What is your goal for private donations, so we have an idea of what you're looking for from the city? What do you feel, what do you guys feel is your goal for the private donations?
I'd go back to what we asked for originally, which is a buy-in from the city nation, which would leave 22,000 from, 22,000 additional of what we have right now.
So you think you can make up the difference between 22,000 and 2,600 by having an answer from us?
Mm-hmm.
That much money is obtainable, you think?
We've had that many businesses come to us and ask, what is the city doing? And since we don't have an answer, they're like, well, if we don't have city support, we don't know whether, you know, they want to see that the city is involved and that the city supports their financially as well as verbally.
Yeah.
Before they put their dollars in.
Do they understand that the $70,000 is, is already city money to begin with? I mean, even though it's in your pot, it came out of budgeting, correct?
This is a new topic of asking to spend our savings.
Okay.
And when we came to the city the first time, we were asking for new dollars, not to use our savings. But Sean has made it clear that the reason why we were saving the money and didn't put it up front in the very beginning is because the library has always been told that we're responsible for everything in that building. We have the original HVAC system since 1969.
Okay.
So for the rainy day, which we've already had one, we've already replaced one furnace in the library from our money, had to change our budget, make things work, we were under the understanding that if the roof, that has to come out of the library's money somehow. So we thought we were being financially responsible as a board in keeping that savings to pay for those items when the rainy day came. However, in the conversation with Sean, we found that he expressed that the city would help pay for those, since it is a city building, which is very, we appreciate that immensely.
Okay.
But if that is the case, then there's no need to sit on the savings. Let's put it towards this project that we think is really important, and given the fact that the library hasn't been renovated since it's been built.
Sure.
And make a better place for everybody.
Sure. Well, thanks for the additional detail. It's helping me out.
I know. There's a lot of background information.
I will, though, go back to the fact that we will need to budget.
Right, absolutely.
In order to be able to give you an answer on that, so, but...
So from here, I'm thinking, you know, what I'd like to see is, if counsel is ready, by making a motion second for approval for them to use their savings and amending the budget, and then bringing this back February, because that'll be right around the time we're discussing budget for next year, seeing where we're at this, that'll give us opportunity to see where we're at this year and if there's potential legal room somewhere that we might be able to help out some way.
Right. And then...
If it's $1,000, I don't know.
In February, we've already submitted proposed budget for 1819 and provided all our justifications and our, you know, what we're asking for.
Thank you.
Do we need to provide anything additional for this renovation project if that is to be included in the next year's budget?
You wouldn't, I don't think you'd need to submit anything in it to us, Jessica. If during budget workshop, the council okays, maybe, I'm just using this as an example, that they wanna take $22,000 from local option sales tax for the library renovation, we would decide at that point if we're just gonna pay it directly out of local option sales tax.
Sure.
Or if I'm gonna put it out of your budget, and I would just change that and let you guys know.
Okay.
But increase the revenue.
Got it.
Yep.
Okay. So we don't need to provide you with anything additional, is what I'm hearing?
No, I don't have to.
Okay. Because you'd like more papers in your packet, right?
Right.
More trees.
But in any case, we would not be able to, you wouldn't get the money until July 1st, because the fiscal year doesn't end until June 30.
We understand that.
we would decide at that point if we're just going to pay it directly out of local option sales tax-
Sure.
Or if I'm going to put it out of your budget and I would just change that and let you guys know. But increase the revenue.
Got it.
Yep.
Okay. So we don't need to provide you with anything additional, is what I'm hearing? Okay, because you'd like more papers in your packet, right?
Right.
More trees.
But in any case, we would not be able to, you wouldn't get the money until July 1st. Because the fiscal year doesn't end until June 30th. So your hopes of starting next month would be, you know, you want to do the whole project, but I don't think you're going to be able to do it until we've had our conversation in the budget planning, which I would say we discussed that at the second meeting of our, in February.
February, yeah, because we're hoping to do budget, beginning of February, give or take.
Yeah, but I don't think we'll have time between the first meeting in February and the budget planning to, I don't know where those days fall, but exactly right now.
Trying to think when the first is.
So, you know, you're looking at a month, six weeks down the road before we even have a commitment out of that budget that comes from the budget planning process.
If it's doable, I'd like to have it at the first meeting in February. If it's not doable, then we'd put, put it in the second. But definitely in February, we'd go back to see what, if there are any possibilities in this fiscal year.
Okay.
So we, the city is fully on board, but in the middle of fiscal year, it's hard for us just to write a check.
Right.
We need to go through our due process too, and we will do that. So in the meantime, uh, any other discussion or question?
No.
Would a council member, is any council member ready to make a motion to approve the amended budget for the library to use the 70,000 out of their savings?
I would make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Just checking, any further discussion? All right, may I have a roll call, please?
Gills.
Hi.
Eggers.
Hi.
Brewster.
Hi.
Kenz.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then we will visit, as, as we're going through the budget, you know, we'll visit with you too before we bring it back to the council meeting to let you know where we, where we can stand-
Okay.
And help you this fiscal year.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Thank you, Nicole. Thank you, Millie, for coming. All right, that was number five on our agenda. As you recall, we're skipping over number six. There's no action at that time regarding that resolution for the wastewater treatment facility. So we will move on to number seven. And at this time, we will consider by resolution authorizing a grant payment to the Sheldon Chamber and Development Corporation. If you recall, this is in regards to the purchase of the Granster property. And this by resolution is just following all the paperwork and following what we need to do for our urban renewal plan, et cetera. It's our legal agreement that we're going to borrow you money and you're going to pay us back two. So, wonderful, we've closed on that. It's, we're moving on. That's great news. So any questions regarding the resolution to authorize a grant payment to the SCDC?
Just to note, the contract did require proof of ownership in SCDC, and we have obtained that, thanks to the county recorder for expediting that.
Wonderful, thank you, Susan. Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the grant.
All right, thank you, Brad. Is there a second?
Support.
Thank you, Greg. Any discussion, questions, explanation? There's none, may I have a roll call, please?
Brewster.
Hi.
Kenz.
Hi.
Gills.
Hi.
Eggers.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
I'm still not used to that. That's awesome. Number eight, considering an agreement to install an outfall pipe and to grant easements. This is out by where our new wastewater treatment facility would be. We did have an amendment to this agreement where it is a $100 compensation to those landowners, and that is to cover any legal fees that they had to incur. Obviously, we need permission to run this pipe through their property. Do you require further explanation? Sean is versed and ready to answer. Todd is by phone if we would need him. If not, we would just need-
Is there a, is there a current outfall pipe? And so does this need to be in a new location or is it approximately the same?
No, it has to be in a, a new location. There's, there's an easement would be required. This is the shortest distance. In, in talking with Todd, we would probably double the length if we had to choose an alternative route for the outfall itself. And the property owner essentially was not asking to be compensated for the use of the easement just to cover the legal costs.
Yes, wow.
Be very, very fair to the city.
Nice. Very nice. Thank you for asking, Pete? Any other questions? And if not, do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Thank you.
Support.
Thank you, Greg. Last request for any comments, questions, further explanation, Micah? Nope, okay, just so you take a breath, so, I don't cut anybody short. May I have a roll call, please?
Kenz.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
Gills.
Hi.
Brewster.
Hi.
Eggers.
Hi.
Number nine on our agenda is considering approval of our goal-setting report. If you recall, um, we had on December 13, a meeting with Jeff Schott to pull us together for a goal planning and dreaming session. He has provided that report to us. What we see happening here today is approving the report. And then going forward, um, Sean, Sean and I, Sean and heads of departments, would then come up with an action plan of how we go about taking on some of these tasks. And do you want to go in further about this information now, Sean?
There, there's a couple of items.
There's a memo before you, like this.
There's a, there are, uh, there, there's four priorities that the council had decided on. Three of those were ties. So the council would need to provide a, a priority listing of the items that they want the staff to work on. I guess more specifically because one of them, or two of them, could be related to the, um, the upcoming operating budget. The, uh, the part-time officers for the police department. If that's something that the council is looking at, wanting to implement for the 2018-19 operating budget, we would need to give the police chief, um, he would need to know that that is something that, that the council is making a priority. And, and we as staff would need to have that information by next Wednesday in order to begin to incorporate that. So if that's something that the council wants to see going into next year, we need to know that, um, essentially this evening, so then the chief can be made aware of that. I guess, so is the question to augment or add to the existing police department for special events? Or is this more in, in line with a succession plan? Because we have a number of officers that within a few years could be looking at, at the potential for retiring. So I guess that's a question that we would need to know. What, what is the intent? And then the other would be, um, the capital improvement funding plan. The, the funding, um, there's a, a gap in the public safety funding. And, and that gap is just in what has been requested up to this point in time. There is an option that can be explored via a utility fee. So if there's interest in that as well, um, it would be nice to, to be given that direction from staff so we can look at that for possible implementation in the current, in the upcoming budget.
As far as police, I, I, correct me if you have other thoughts, anybody else, but I see us starting out with the special events and seeing where that could lead into succession as our, some of our officers are ready to retire.
That's I always think, there's times where people are on vacation, are injuries, and they're down to one person. It'd be nice if you had the part-time person that could cover some of those shifts. You know, like the summer when Todd was out and I think Brian was out.
Brian was injured, yep.
They were really scraping to cover shifts from what I was told.
Are, are we thinking like more of a one-part-timer and then other people as special events, maybe? I mean, I don't know.
I don't know. And then I just threw in special events.
It's an idea, okay.
That's what I would look at.
Look at a one-part-timer and then as special events come up, the possibility of- Any other thoughts there? Welcome aboard. I should have said that in the beginning.
Can someone maybe give me a timeframe of when these retirements are coming around, existing officers?
Quite sure, but we have, what, three or four that are up there in years?
Three that would probably, they definitely can within the next five years. And I think a couple of them will, probably.
So it makes sense that we begin succession planning?
I would recommend starting off with planning for a one-part-timer. And as, as special events come up, we can, we can see how that might pan out as well.
So one part-time position and then start looking at a, a reserve program? Starting a reserve program to, to help out with the special events?
I think that'd be a good idea.
I think it's something we can certainly look at.
I don't know if that always works when we call in county. And I don't know, like when we have big events in town. I, I know I see county more, but I, I would like to chat with Lyle if you weren't ill.
Yeah, I guess, what would, what would Lyle like? You know, one or two part-time? I think we need some information from him on what his department would, would like.
What I will do then is when Lyle is back in the office, because he's sick still, let's get together with him and, and see what his thoughts are on that too. But, uh, for now, we'll plan on possibly the one-part-timer and then look at reserves.
Well, and, and we know the staff, uh, that we should look at trying to get this implemented for the next budget year. So that, that was the most crucial thing, is, is knowing that we should try to implement that. And then the other would be the utility franchise fee. Is that something that we want information on in the form of a presentation? Um, I did provide some information, um, in the handouts this evening to take with you to read through. But you could actually have somebody from an American come in and put on a presentation if there's interest.
I think that might be a, an idea to entertain during budget time. Is that the wrong time? Do you do it before? Or do you have them come in at budget time? I don't know.
I guess I'd like a little information of how many other local towns-
Have this.
Have it.
All right, we'll give that to you tomorrow.
Great, good.
And then see about a presentation and then maybe tie that in when we're doing our budget times. Greg?
Is the franchise be the only option we have in terms of increasing revenues?
That is the one option that is being considered at, at this point in time. There's an option of creating a stormwater utility, um, something that is half implemented at, and that's used to defray some of the costs for street sweeping and so forth. So some of the, some of the, there, there is a potential for that, but you're looking at, um, something that would take at least a year or not longer to look at implementing and go through the process. This particular, um, option is, is something, again, and I'll share that, that, but a few communities within the state of Iowa have implemented. And it's something if, if the council would choose to go that route in the future, would take essentially three council readings of, of ordinance implementing utility fee. So you're looking at, at roughly 60 to 90 days. Once the, once the ordinance is, is approved at, at the municipal level, they'll need to, um, update their, um, their data. And then essentially they'll, they'll provide, provide that monthly, um, utility to the city itself. So it's something that you could implement within a very short period of time.
So it's easy, but is it the best?
Is it the best? It's, it's something that is, is something that each, from an equity standpoint, every property, whether it's, it's a taxable or non-taxable property, would be participating in that. All benefiting from the services of the city. From public safety. If, if it's earmarked towards public safety for the purchase of equipment and, and vehicles, they certainly would, would realize a benefit from public safety services.
And that's, I would like to see how those different scenarios pan out when we're sitting down during budget time, just to see how they play into our budget, you know? Whether it's an absolute need or not, I guess that's, I do like to see those scenarios so that-
Yeah.
Go ahead and start getting the puzzle together so we can see how it pieces when we're at budget shop. Different, you know, whether it's the Mid-American franchise or the stormwater utility, but just to see how that could. And we can specify them specifically.
Stormwater utility would be months and months out before that could even-
Okay.
It would not be a fact, it would not factor into our 1819 budget setting session.
So, yeah, I would be curious how many other communities do that, what that would look like, and then see how that would play out in our budget session time. Okay, is there anything more you want to talk about now with the goal setting? We just need to move, make a motion for approval of the report. I just want to make sure, okay. So, any questions regarding our goal-setting report that Jeff Schott had put together? It's always nice to have this tool. It's wonderful to get together with him. Hopefully, he'll make an exception in a couple of years to come out of retirement and guide us again. But it's great to have this before us to see where we've been, where we hope to go. And it's a great tool to have in our tool belt just to, as we plan for our future. So, um, we would need a motion to approve our goal-setting report. Is anyone willing to make that motion?
I'll move that.
Support.
Thank you. And may I have a roll call, please?
Did we put in any particular order? Thought we were looking for direction?
Oh, as far as the, the items? Because the three top were the police, the part-time police, the adoption of the rental code, and the funding plan. CIP, the capital improvement items.
Yes, SCDC, um, has also identified dilapidated buildings and, and so forth is, is a, is a high priority. So that's something that Kurt and I have already had some initial discussions on. And we'll be looking at other state programs that, that help, uh, communities deal with dilapidated buildings. So that's something that we'll be working on. If adopting a rental code, we'll be asking questions of council to try to dial in the details on-
Forming a committee and who goes on it. But this time, really want to follow through with that, because we've dreamed about that a few times. And, uh, we get so busy that that one gets pushed off at the side, but that's something we can keep knocking to the side.
The only other thing is that when I look at those three things, developing a funding plan for, for capital improvement projects is not optional.
That's something we need to do, yeah.
The other two, I understand that someone might feel they are important, but they are optional.
And to be realistic, so when you look at that back page, page nine, you know, five of us did vote for providing funding for aggressive efforts in getting rid of abandoned unsafe buildings. That's something that we need to move forward with within our office. We just need to get to our, um, nuisance codes and stick with them and take care of them. Then the other, the next three were the tie of the part-time police officer, the adoption of the rental code, and the CIP items. Realistically, the option, the, uh, adopting a rental code, I see us working on that and I would love to have something in place soon, but not rush that. You know, maybe work on that so that within the next year, we can have something come into play and how that will pan out. Yeah, the CIP items, that's something that's, that's a priority.
As we get into the budget process, we may find out that-
Great.
We have other priorities and we'll see.
Exactly. Yep. So we're just sticking with those top.
Because they all take revenue.
Yep.
But obviously, that very first one, that's something that's in-house that we need to, um-
Well, and we have other tools to use in addressing that.
Well, you betcha. Yep. So. Okay, any other questions then regarding the goal? Would you like to make them, not one, two, or three, or just we're going to work on them together? And as we get into budget, we will determine to the precedence of things. Okay, so we had a motion, we had a section, second, we had discussion, any further? May I have a roll call, please?
Kenz.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
Brewster.
Hi.
Eggers.
Hi.
Gills.
Hi.
Thank you, and last is comments. I do have some, but I'll go over on the table to see if there are any. Counselors on the left. To my right, comments, Greg?
Uh, I guess one is a question, I'm just wondering, an update on how Maddie Yule, Yule turned out?
She's doing really well.
Remarkably well.
She, um, today had her breathing tube removed and they had her up. They are planning to actually take her from ICU to a lower level room tonight already, where they expected her to be in ICU yet tomorrow.
So continue prayers and, and hopefully people are coming, yep. So Todd was on his way back, I believe, but-
He is, but he's quite tired.
He needs to rest, he needs to rest, so, you know, we'll just, we'll continue with our prayers. Um, Sean, you had a couple of things you wanted to point out?
Uh, yes, with the, uh, with the advent of the new website that Kurt had spent, uh, months and months-
Looks great.
Comes the addition of photos. Uh, so we would like to have photos added to that for the elected and, and staff positions. So if you could work on providing photos to Ange over the next week. Are we looking at having those installed on the website?
Cartoons won't work? Oh. Or we'll find them, right?
Or we'll find them, yes. We'll find one of your profile pictures, because, yeah. So we all need to submit those, that would be wonderful.
Bring a camera up at the next meeting.
We're going to borrow your camera, Tom. Okay, and then I would just like to, I, sorry, guys, I get to going on our meetings. And welcome, Tom, Sean, thank you for being a part and stepping up and, uh, joining us on the council. We look forward to working with you these next four years. And with that said, reminder, budget workshop will be sometime around the first of February. What we're thinking, I was talking to Sean briefly, Hutchison, is, um, we've always done like a half a day session, but what we might do so we can take our time going through this and inviting in department heads if they would like to join us, is maybe breaking it up into two sessions. So whether it's a morning and then an evening, or an evening and then morning, we'll look into that and pull to see what works with schedules too. But be prepared, we will be going over the budget session workshop soon. And that is all I have, so do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Support.
All right, and may I have a roll call, please?
Eggers.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
Kenz.
Hi.
Brewster.
Hi.
Hamel. Oh, Kenz.
Yeah. You missed Gills.
Did I? I missed Greg? Gills, sorry about that.
Eyes off? All right, thank you, we are adjourned.